Blah, blah, blah. Active planning board, day seven. Take a minute for the minutes, I have an motion. And Art did come in, so he can vote on this.
Yeah, I was.
He was just a little kind of late saying.
I'm not gonna motion you in a second.
Don't we have to amend the...
Is there a second?
I second it, we have to...
Now, there are any changes or questions? There's a protocol!
We need to strike the sentence that says, "Mr. Keller stated, 'cause I wasn't here."
Did I put that in?
No, you didn't.
Did you say it?
Well, either I was here or I wasn't. One of the...
Is that something you would've said?
Yes.
Well, you might've said that after you were here.
I was here.
Well, it's just being difficult. Any other changes or questions? Turn up!
The second paragraph, second of the last sentence. Vice Chair stated that the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen and the CEO, as well as Mr. Vanelle and Mr. Cashin, met with the town assessor.
Oh, she wants to throw my name in there. Throw me under the bus.
And then the last sentence should read, "Of the fifteen that were approved, none were based on resource protection limitations outside of the Shoreland Zone."
Wait, of the fifteen, were all fifteen approved?
Yes, no. All, there were fifteen abatements approved during that time period. And none of the abatements, there were five in question. The janitor did not know the reason, because it was not given on the assessing card. And of those five that we looked at with O'Donnell's, none of the questionable ones, nor were any of the others based upon resource protection issues outside of Shoreland Zone.
All fifteen were approved?
Correct, yeah. Fifteen were approved.
None of them were issues dealing with expansion in RP.
Outside of...
Outside or inside? Alright, anything else?
Ken Paul was not there. So many moments. So Art was here.
And what is? Alright. Anything else? All's in favor of I? All's opposed, nay? Fine, good, fast. Today's the... I don't like watching... Alright, let's... What do we got here? Okay, down the road. Alright, new business, best practical locations. Shirley, the deck? Is that it? Levite, sorry. 64A Route 109, map, map 233 lot 0, lot 32. Applying to replace a fire damaged mobile home in commercial zone A. Oh, wait a minute. I know where this is.
Did that, the house get built today?
I hope not.
There's a house built today, it was like...
On Sandborne.
Yeah, on Sandborne.
Who put the house?
It was big, yeah. The whole house.
I don't remember if we did a best possible location for that one. They may have moved it back. That was a different fire.
Okay, the deal here is, Ken...
I think she's eighty-eight feet from the road. The commercial A is 125. So she meets the 75, which is required over most of the town. And I believe it's also a non-conforming block, so most of the town would reduce that to 50. She's eighty-eight feet from the road, the slab is existing. Right out behind it, there's a drainage area wet. There really, I think it's a 12-foot wide mobile home now. She's proposing a 14-2-foot expansion to be on the backside, getting further away from the road.
But, within wherever the rock wall or whatever is back that you said, there's something...
Drain ditch.
Drain ditch.
Yeah. It's not protected.
The, it's a hundred-foot setback, right? Hundred-twenty? Now, that's a state though, is it? No?
No, that's our zoning. State doesn't care, as long as you're out there right of way, they don't care.
Which, oh, and they're right of way to go back there, farmers?
No, I think they have a 75-foot wide right of way, so it'll only be half of that distance from the yellow.
Oh, alright. Oh, wow. And this place was totally...
Yes, it was a mobile home. The fire destroyed it, and they've demoed it, removed the whole thing, except for the existing pad. So the foundation would stay, and they would just add to the back of it.
So there's a foundation under the pad there?
There's just a pad.
Oh. Will there be a foundation under, no?
It's just a pad.
Just a pad, even in back? Two extra two feet, just a pad, no footing?
No.
So a two-foot wide pad is gonna be solid enough to...
They're gonna drill into the existing unit and tie it into it. Main state law allows mobile homes, manufactured housing, to be put on a gravel pad. So they've at least got a concrete pad existing that they put in. I think it was in the eighties, they put the first unit in there, eighty-six. So they're just gonna drill into that all the way and tie it to that, so it exceeds the minimum standards.
Okay, that's just because it's a wider...
Yep, yep. I don't think they make the 12-foot anymore. That's when they used to call them trailers. Now it's manufactured housing, and they go with the 13A or 14.
And your recommendation is?
That's a viable option.
What are the backwards there?
Yeah, and then the two sheet going to the backside. And it's a brand new unit going in.
Any other questions from anybody? Any other comments from anybody? Well, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'm not gonna motion you in a second.
I'll second you.
Anything to add, anybody? All's in favor of I?
I.
All's opposed, nay? Somebody's here, rest easy tonight. Next! And congratulations to Levite. Vicki Reilly. 3026 Stonehill Road, map 247 lot 222. Applying to construct a garage, deck, and a foundation under L of structure in Shoreland Zone. Rough road. Used to be a barn over here, correct?
Correct, yeah, I've got it now, I'm leaving that one there. And, she's doing a foundation under half of the building there, and it's within the 75-foot setback of the Salmon Falls River. And I'd say it's, we should not do the whole thing, it makes sense just to leave it where it is.
I'm lost.
Yeah, where is this?
Where, where does she put it, what she's putting? This is, this is the old barn.
That's the barn that's been removed.
Right.
Thing says...
She's gonna replace this one?
Nope, just the...
Oh!
Just the foundation under that, sorry, sir. So she's got a foundation going under the stone part of the house on the left-hand side. It's 54 feet from where the water is right now at the high watermark. So it's within the 75-foot setback of the Salmon Falls.
What about the deck?
Deck doesn't matter to you guys.
It's outside of...
That's gonna be just a 30% expansion, that'll be within it, but that's just one of the things she's...
But it's no closer?
Correct.
Nothing's closer now that the barn's removed?
Correct. By removing the barn, she made the lot a lot better, but it doesn't help her with the regulations. If the barn was there, it'd been a lot easier for her with a lot of things, but it was in poor shape, so...
Right. Now...
How much excavation could go in?
Just around the foundation, take care of that. She'll have to use DEP certified contract...
You guys see this?
Surely a zone. There were two holes. It's just a little different envelope.
Can we see them?
In the site plan.
Um, is the other part of the house have a foundation, or is it just...
It's in better shape, it is, all on foundations.
So when she's...
And this section is on just... The foundation under over here, right?
Yes.
So this garage is gonna go into...
It says under the L.
No, she's gonna do the garage over on this side, so the garage will be...
Garage is gonna be away from her.
Yep, yeah, and the deck's gonna be into that area there, no closer to the water. That'll be a 30% expansion. She's gonna do some other grading areas, paving and things like that. And all of it will be working to reduce the stormwater getting into the Salmon Falls.
Oh, really, that's always a plus.
And how's that gonna be... How's that gonna be addressed? Either send it to the York Police Department or...
You're acting field, this is more readily available, or with a minor construction going on.
That's the barn, the barn's gone, huh?
Drosses not.
So you'll see something before, some path point into the garage?
Isn't that the garage?
In the lot.
Yeah, or come through a storm, take a pop or a sway or whatever's gonna work.
Is, is the picture, this section?
Yep.
Is this picture, so we're not looking at anything over here?
No.
We're only looking at the, what you have kind of existing?
Yeah. The red, the red's been removed already.
Right, right, over there.
And the garage is going...
All the way on the right, out of the, out of the whole area.
And the deck is the part that's...
Deck is gonna fit in that corner.
Over here?
Over here.
Over here?
Yes.
In the front?
Yeah, so that's just a 30% expansion. Septic was replaced five years ago, five, six years ago, and that's all up to date.
So the garage is gonna be new?
Correct. Originally, she wanted to put the garage on the left-hand side where the barn was, but had she pulled a permit to do the garage and remove the barn at the same time, she may have been able to do it. But removing the barn several years ago, that just eliminated her from doing anything on that whole side of the, of the property.
Yep.
Kind of foundation is that?
Um... Yeah, yeah, cleaned up nice. This is all cobbley stuff underneath there, and it's all in deteriorated shape. On the L, the L packs, which she's really looking at.
The rest of, the main part of the house is a little more south.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like it's concrete.
I think there's some granite there. It's an old, it's an old, it's an old house.
That was historical.
I never liked that house.
Yes, but is it, is it... Is the spot historical?
It is an old place, that's for sure. She's done a lot of work to it the past five, three years fixing it up.
And your recommendation is?
Leaving it where it is, where it's a minor addition to it.
And you're gonna see a plan of vegetating the old barn side before the permits...
Yeah, that's pretty well revegetated now, it would be...
Keeping the water from running off towards the...
Yeah.
That's what I had, sorry.
Yeah, it looks like just minor green.
Yeah, probably. Any other comments? Yes, yes.
No, I'm just like, for the, the only motion done.
Alright then, and it is? Two, except Ken's recommendation?
Ken's recommendation.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any further comments, questions? All's in favor of I? All's opposed, nay? Jesus, God. Who are we? Another happy camper. Ah, fallen Vicki Reed, 1060 Redgate Lane, map 119 lot 8. Applying to build retaining walls in the Shoreland Zone. Two retaining walls.
What this is, is we did a best possible location, the house was actually on a dock on Grady's Lake in the Narrows. We did a best possible location, which relocated the house back about 60 or 70 feet. And it's really steep out there, he's constructed retaining wall in front of the structure.
Which meant with DEP?
No, it's all a violation. So the issue is...
How long ago was that?
Four years ago, maybe?
This is the retaining?
That's the retaining wall. So the...
What's it made of?
The precast, the blocks that you're throwing in there. So I'd say this, if the board wants to consider relooking at best practical location they gave the house. He did, I think, a 10 or 11-foot wall in the house, had it all engineered and stuff. The builder didn't give him enough guidance, and I spoke to the builder a few times about coming over in front of the house, because it dropped straight off like a cliff. And I told the builder, no walls or anything like out there, that didn't get passed on to the homeowner.
No walls, we're talking on the large side?
Correct.
Yeah.
All our permits go out in the house, saying no retaining walls, no patios, no cut trees, things like that, so they're more clear up. This would be an issue if the board wants to reconsider the setback they imposed on the house and reduce it by, he's got six or seven feet there, I think that's...
What, that he can move back?
No, the wall itself. The wall is encroached on the water by six or seven feet. I think that's probably excessive of the bare minimum that was needed.
Now, which wall are we talking about?
Uh...
The big tall one or the little short thing in front?
Oh, it's, it's all the structure. Yeah, where's the, that one?
That big thing across the front there?
Yeah, I think it's six feet, maybe eight feet.
Yeah, that's what this is.
So, at this point, he needs to remove it all and revegetate. The board could, with a sidewalk, go out and look at it, say realistically, you need some sort of structure here. I think we pushed him into the eighties, eighty-eight or something like that back.
Wait, we, we made, we made him move the place back?
The house, yeah, yeah.
How far from the water? Eighty-something?
I think so, yeah, so it's significantly...
And, and it was, and none of the, wait...
We pushed him right into the road.
And none of it could be closer than whatever we gave as...
Correct.
The dimension.
For the house. Eaves, overhangs, everything.
Right, so... How much further is, how much closer is this to the water than that?
Wall, I would say it's seven feet, six or seven feet. And I would think at a minimum, if he was going to walk, four feet.
Now, this wall... Is, is it necessary for the...
Structural of the house?
Yeah.
You could vegetate a slope there, and he wouldn't be able to get down to the lake through the area that he is currently using. I think he'd almost have to go through the neighbor's yard to go up through it. So his only option right now would be if the board would reconsider the setback from the water, reducing that number. And had the wall been part of the plan at the beginning, I would have probably suggested that that was the number we went with. Not the location that it's at now, I would think, still it would need to go back a couple of feet. So this would be something we would need to do a sidewalk, I would suggest. If the board would want to reconsider reducing the...
Well, that's the concrete that's down by the water, or is that just a perspective?
I was driving by and saw a pallet of...
These things here?
Wall bricks. And I had to stop by and take a look.
Are you talking about this stuff?
Uh, no, right down at the dock, there's, there's like a...
I don't know that.
The house was on the dock when he wanted to relocate it.
So it was way down this hill?
Yeah, it was eighty-something steps.
What am I saying? Was I in a town? Why do we do this? So, so there was never any discussion about building a wall at all? It was moved back?
No, because, yeah, he would've been in front of his house, couldn't have worked the floor.
Have we got files?
Because, yeah, there's gotta be something, can you scare it up?
That's okay.
I possibly could, you want me to try?
Well, yeah, because, you know, I'm ready to say, hey, sorry, I don't care that you have to walk through your neighbor's yard to get to the thing, this is... Where was Kenny when this was going on? I don't get it.
He said he saw a pallet of retaining wall bricks, and that's when he stopped to see if there's someone. There's more than a pallet here.
Yeah, no kidding.
Gymnastic concrete stuff.
The last, that would've been the last. This, you know, this is why those, you know, asking forgiveness versus permission deals, you know? Which...
You look at the workmanship, it's, it's a shame. I mean, like, I think they dropped this...
This is kind of rad. The wall looks okay. I think we oughta go out there and take a look, before we really crush their dreams, but...
So what would we make them do?
Well, we'd have to get a better idea of what it looks like, I think.
Is there anything in this file?
I was just trying to...
I'll stick that together.
Well, I mean, it's, it's... We can, we, if we went, if we did this, if we did a best possible location, we said it has to be, let's say, eighty feet from the water, which is the closest part of the house. And then we get all this extra shit, this is all part of that, and this shouldn't be there. If we don't improve this...
What are the conditions?
Let's go.
That was the original place down on the dock.
Oh, yeah, LX is 30%. Did you do this? Is this one of your jobs? Jesus, Cashin!
My cat did it, I didn't work it.
I would say it wasn't an intentional violation, because he didn't have a certificate of occupancy yet, so he knew I was coming back out.
Well, that's not gonna stop anybody.
But he did this...
Has to stop him 30 years!
What about the certificate of occupancy?
Pass it over after.
Yeah, but for what?
Because usually they don't want to do it after.
Exactly, the violators do it the day after they get it, they're all set to go.
I don't know, I...
Coming into street, I heard I hear it's a river.
Bill?
Yes.
You gotta give him credit for ingenuity, or something.
I don't know, I, to be, I would like to go out there and take a look at this.
That's what I was suggesting, you get a good vision, go out there and... If...
If nothing else?
Did you guys see all this picture? I think you were hiding most of it.
So, just a quick review again, the, the house? Where's, what's the house setback relative to what you permitted him to do, or what the board permitted him to do?
The house is offset.
It's that?
It's the retaining wall, which I would have thought... We're leaning towards blaming the engineer, he had a reputable engineer firm do all the designs, the foundation was designed, and we pushed him right up into the road. Engineers should have picked up that, you know, you step out your house, there's a slope. They should have originally had a small retaining wall as close to the house as possible.
Just a way to access going downhill.
To get out, yeah. And then, then you'd have an area to get onto the stairs, I said hugely 70, 80 stairs down to the water on the side.
Were those stairs original?
Oh, yeah, yeah, all stairs to the...
Well, I don't know. I don't know if any of the kind of foundations is underneath that retaining thing, it's just maybe... A footwell, who knows? When did, when did this retaining wall go in, the idea?
I found it last year.
And, and when did all this, when did we do that?
Actually, I had to tear down.
2012.
Yeah, 2012, I'm not above that 30%. Yeah, we gotta look at the, look at the whole thing.
Yeah, that increase looks like over 30%.
Maybe the deck upstairs is, is the 30%? It looks like a long tiny boathouse.
They must've counted like the bunker underneath.
Ah, there you go.
Bomb shelter.
Which went back into the hill. Well, so if we, if we take a sidewalk, we're gonna need it at least in two weeks.
Yeah, he's out of town till June anyways.
Oh, yeah, like, he's not in a hurry to reach it, I'm sure.
No, no, but he, he is constantly calling and trying to find out, and I told him, there's no sense doing a sidewalk till the snow melts, and the next one's gonna need a sidewalk too.
Yeah, so we have to pick a date that's on a Saturday, right?
May I tell you about if you do all that?
Well, the market, you guys are, the market on Saturday, right?
Yeah.
So he's at the market on Saturday.
How about some, yeah, how about some evening?
Thursday before the meeting in June?
That'd be good.
Yeah, wanna try that?
That stuff needs...
Thursday, me too, well... Seven o'clock is about the best for you guys, right? Earlier was tougher. Now, is that any night, or is that just Thursday nights? Doesn't have to be a Thursday, we can do it any night of the week, Thursday.
Or would you do it at seven? Oh, I guess...
Sunday morning, what about Sunday morning? Any churchgoers here?
I'm praying. Praying for Thursday.
Why not on Thursday at seven? We have enough time to advertise, why not do it at seven with the daylight? Why not take advantage of it? The buds will be out, but...
June 11th?
What is that, Thursday? That's not the first?
No, that would be the second.
We'd do it not on the regular...
Oh, you're doing, oh, hang it! Ah!
I work in a regular meeting.
But, yeah, but then it would make, it would make things... I like your idea better. I like a night that's not a regular meeting. I, I think it, it can make for, you know, we'll be screwing around there for a while, we'll get back here, we won't start here till eight o'clock. It may be the one night, we've got some bunch of stuff and...
Not if we, not if we set at a time.
I have a second sidewalk coming up too, so...
We can do both at the same time.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Alright.
What about on Monday night?
Monday's fine with me. Wednesday's not, but Monday's fine.
Thursday works good.
Monday night?
Thursday.
But, oh, that's because of you.
Thursday, the 11th.
Yeah, but you don't want a Monday because you're not here on Mondays. Is that your point?
That's one.
I'm like, man.
You're here on Tuesdays, could you...
Tuesday.
Could you change your hour?
A Thursday, that's for you.
Well, some people can't come up before the meeting, and...
Well, this is a non-meeting night, it's seven o'clock.
Oh, Thursday.
Because usually Thursdays are scheduled to be...
Oh, I see, sorry, yeah, sunburn.
Well, that's right, you're, yeah, you're doing stuff until we start. Six, 11 at 7:00 P.M.?
Yeah, it's sunburn.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I could do early, but it sounds like seven works better.
But if we're doing two of them, we're gonna do the other day? So we're gonna back, back up maybe six and seven anyway? I guess it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, I mean...
Well, it depends how long they'll take, you know?
When is the night?
Let's see what the alien tells.
That one's gonna be easier.
But so is for the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Some would just have to see it at one point.
Wait, now, do we have a bothers for this, for this or no?
No, forget.
Just have to notify the public.
That public...
I have a policy, it's an extra reason.
Yeah.
Which probably just kind of works, so...
Really, you want, you want... Yeah, the public has an option, no, I think we have to notify, we have to put something in the paper. We have to pass a sidewalk.
What'd you say?
Which one is it?
Well, it's invited.
This is the new, the next one.
So now we're in all business.
We're in all business now.
Yes, only because we talked about this one when there was still snowing around last week.
Okay, so it's, it's existing foundation is 15 foot.
Yes.
Ooh, Garrison! Where's this big guy?
Uh, 13th Street, 724.
Brand...
Busted.
Busted, cool. 7413, at 142 mile...
He bought the house last year, he came in and looked at the file, and I looked at the file, I noticed the foundation underneath it. Our old assessing photos don't show the foundation underneath it, they just show wood frame. So somebody put the foundation underneath it without permits before he bought it. There's a couple of feet it could move back maybe, but not a real lot.
What, do you want thirty percent expansion?
Uh, he wants to basically rip the upper part off and keep the foundation.
Oh, he wants to rebuild?
Rebuild.
Oh, right.
In the spot that it's in now.
How close to the water is it?
Yeah.
It's at the water, that's the retaining wall for the water. It is on the water.
And what is, what is there, a hill behind him or something?
Straight up.
Well, I remember walking, did we walk around that general area, haven't we?
It's on Fifteenth Street.
Oh, am I thinking of Paul Street?
Is he near that guy that we were at last year?
Yeah, I think the only, this last sidewalk we did was on Grady's.
Oh, Thirteenth! Well, this is the other side of the area.
So Kenny, is he proposing to expand this block foundation out to where it...
Sounds like he wants to cut the roof off, which probably gonna lead into ripping the walls down, probably rip the floor off. Uh, and rebuild, turn the pitch of the roof, and try to do it as best environmentally as is, but leave the foundation where it is.
Including these posts?
Including the posts, he'd maybe leave a cantilever structure or something.
So he's gonna pitch the roof...
Opposite way, is how we talked last year.
Into the hill?
That's right.
No. Isn't a, a regular four-foot foundation with real footings, or is it just a couple of feet? Is it worth saving?
The big reason worth saving is you'd have to lug the thing all the way out of there. So, and that's his though, he wants to save what's there.
Is it sonar tubes or?
No, it's probably a slab with the block walls all the way around it.
Those look like lollyhaws.
Of the front, yeah, yeah, that's what those are. Six feet from the water, three feet off the property. Then again, we had a discussion before we bought it, but there's nothing I'd chase as a violation, but when you come in to do things, that's when it pops itself out. There you go.
So we could say thirty percent expansion, but we don't like the low like columns, just, just go up a little bit more, keep the front of the foundation as the front.
You had one expand, right?
No, he's gonna rip, gotta rip seven floors off and, and replace it.
Oh, okay.
Well, we could say new, new front of the camp is, is the foundation as opposed to a cantilever.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You know, they'll get the roof line back that, whatever it is, four or five feet there.
So is that six feet from the water, Kenny, to where the underneath part is, or to the...
I would say to the, to the, to the columns.
And how, what's the... How much are the... Four feet, six feet?
Yeah, I'd say so.
Did that water lapse up, or did it...
It froze trees.
Yeah.
Cold water, water twenty, twenty. Just... Well, do you guys wanna take a sidewalk, or are you comfortable, uh, believing what Kenny says about going straight uphill right behind us? Because Kenny figured we should go out and take a look at it.
Yes.
So you're saying, Kenny?
Say versus... Let me give you a better, better look at it, see if there's any room to move the foundation back.
There isn't room to move the four to six feet wherever it is that.
Um, no, it's, you can see the base of the tree right there, and that's right behind it. It is pretty steep. Uh, if this was brand new coming in, I'd maybe two feet, you can move it back a little. And then you'd be into probably a twelve-foot wall back there instantly.
You must be, you must be pumping up to the septic.
Yeah, yeah, he's got a plan for whatever, something that he wants to do.
Well, that's always plus. You can get the septic down.
Kenny, what's the depth of the log? Does he have any...
Uh, yeah, he's, well, not at the top of the hill, I think it's all, uh, hiltie, get to Thirteenth Street. He does have a couple hundred foot depth of the log, but it's still, you, you, the flat spot's the only thing down at the bottom.
Is it, is it possible for us to, to eliminate the overhang on the log columns and start at the beginning of the foundation, if that's what he's gonna do, is go up and gain whatever that is?
I would think, because your authority gives you the closest point to the water, and normally you're looking at the foundation because it's just unique, so...
Catch me if you can, put it back to two feet if we wanted to.
Yeah, but when, when we set a limit, it's, that's the limit, it's the eaves, it's the this, it's the that. You may have a, a way to walk down to the water, but that's it. So, you know, if we wanna kick it back a couple of feet and eliminate those columns and, uh, part of the cantilever, I mean, if he's gonna rebuild the top half, maybe he was gonna, he sticks the cantilever anyway. Get rid of that concrete.
He's gonna be losing interior square footage, is that, can we ask him to do that?
He would, I would assume, could just go back into the hill.
Yeah, maybe a cantilever off the backside.
The hill is gonna become an engineering compound, isn't it?
No, if, if it's a second floor, there's all kinds of room. The hill doesn't go like this.
Okay, oh, he's...
He can walk out, he can walk out of the second floor. Oh, I'm pumped to the hill. Ooh, I like that.
So he's gonna do so, I understand? I'm confused.
Yes, he's top, he's, he's gonna replace the top half. He doesn't like the top half of it, hence now he's gonna replace it.
So it's basically a walkout?
All he's got now is like a dorm, yeah.
You know, to me, I mean, the less disturbance that happens, the better.
Yeah, but you can push the house back to where the foundation is.
Yeah.
And just make it narrower, and he's getting, he's thirty percent by going up. Or, and up and, and split it, yeah.
And back.
So ask him to, to, you know, no renovation required.
I'm wondering about what kind of foundation it really is, though. If it was put in on the slide, you know, did they jack the house up and put a foundation and footings underneath it? Or are they just, you know?
Somebody had to carry those blocks.
I know each one. Yeah, I mean, they just probably supported it and poured a slab down there and, effective footings. Uh, we had that discussion first, we come complaints, who's gonna need to put foam around the perimeter and keep the heat on.
Yeah, so he's, he has to rebuild the foundation anyway, right? Or...
No, he can just put foam around the perimeter.
But you're thinking that once he gets going, he's gonna end up demolishing everything?
Once you start with a renovation, the snowball's pretty tough to...
To stop.
To stop. I mean, the, the big thing here is you've gotta lug everything out of here all the way up the stairs.
That's what matches are for.
Yep.
So what I wish we have for a solution is just no excavating?
Well, he would probably excavate on the backside, if, if you forced him to build to the back, he would either do a foundation on the backside or sonar tubes or something.
I thought we were talking about splitting...
Oh, we were just, we were just spitballing. He could put his door, he could put his overhang on the back part of the house. You know, and it would be high enough that it would be above the ground, you know? But, uh...
Although the hill goes right here, very far back, we're gonna do the second floor.
Cantilever into the back.
Those trees would have to all come down.
Oh, that's not fine with us.
Well, maybe we should, I don't know.
Take a look at it.
Yeah, yeah, they should, what they have. It is on the opposite side of the town from the first one, but hey, what are you gonna do?
Yeah, it's gonna get late.
Yeah.
It's gotta go the other way.
What does?
It's gonna be earlier in, like, six-thirty and seven-thirty?
Well, can you guys make six-thirty?
I can make six-thirty.
Well, if you can't make them both, you know, you can make one of them.
We'll pick you up on the way by. If we go to Reed's first, we'll be coming back here and...
Which one is that? Oh, that's the one on Thirteenth, one of that first?
So it'll be six-thirty?
No, Reed is the Red Gate lane.
Correct, that would be the retaining wall.
That's a bit of a drive.
And that's where it appears that, relative to, like, the ground.
Which ground, good, Lansing and Depot?
Yeah.
Yeah, just could pass that, take left and right side. Second right, but first one, we'll see.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Pass the pit.
Gotta pass the, 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 Adrian.
Yeah, can we, remember that house that we did on the...
Uh, i- i- it's about a half mile, and you turn to Red Gate, the signs are there. We'll probably all meet here anyways.
Yeah, it'd be the safest one.
Yeah. Come in the other way, Stewie Drive.
I just remember when, when we have the hearing to...
So we'll do that one first at six-thirty then? Me here, do that. Oh, well, here at six-thirty?
Here at six-thirty. Because once you go out and look at it, five, ten minutes of staring at it, it doesn't change.
What's that?
Still what it is.
Yeah. Block break sledge.
So then, the second one would be at...
That's the retaining wall.
It'll be between...
Say seven-thirty. By the time we...
Between, after seven o'clock.
I can't put that.
After seven, before.
It's a minus thirty minutes.
There you go, yeah.
Be like the cable company.
Plus or minus two minutes, that's more than thirty hours.
Alright, so we're all set with those then. And now the date, what's the date?
Six-eleven.
Do you want to see it or?
Six-eleven.
Smile six-thirty, go over there.
Is it? On the ten.
It'll be a hundred.
Hundred and one.
Oh, yeah, a hundred?
Six-eleven, six-thirty here, Red Gate, and then over to Thirteenth.
Okay, six-thirty at Town Hall.
And that's for, uh, Reed and then...
Busted.
Busted.
And we'll have a meeting before that, so we can be reminded.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Proposed amendment to the ordinance relative to historic structures. All we have to do is get out the sheets, you just got that allude to the comp plan and historic and archaeological down at the bottom of V one, and then uh, a little bit on the top of V two, and then and then the middle of, uh, one X. And is this proposed amendment, which is really spot centerpiece, I don't care what it is. And keeping in mind, are we talking historic buildings? Or are we talking historic? Seats. That's all I'm saying.
Historical sites and buildings.
And as far as issues brought up about the amendment, whether this needs to be fixed and that needs to be fixed, that's out of our purview, that's up to the selectmen and the town meeting. All we're looking at is, do we think it complies, this proposal comply with what we have written in the comp plan? Any time and money spent in restoring old sites and buildings and identifying historic... So it may be worth any time and money spent in restoring that since...
Well, that's not the purpose of rebuilding the red schoolhouse. It's not for visitors. It's just to be a place where you say you go past the red schoolhouse on your way to somewhere else, right?
So visit could be more...
One, one, two remaining of the, one of the schools, yeah?
I guess, probably.
So is that the new plan, though? They're not just gonna rebuild it, they're gonna make it into something?
Can't be a restaurant, I've already said that to the public here, so I'm on record, can't be a restaurant.
Well, his ordinance, or how it's drafted, says it has to be altered from its use, which, when you talk to any of the historical societies, they don't encourage you to fix these things up and leave them empty. They, they'd like to see a use, whether it's a gift shop, craft shop, something. They don't wanna see it vacant, because as you go around and fix up all the historical structures, if you leave them vacant, you really haven't done anything, they're just gonna fall into disarray again. So, I mean, it's kinda bad that they can't use anything and...
No one would stop, stop them from storing their lawnmower in there if they wanted to, I mean...
Well, there...
Is that what we're talking about, somebody uses it as a shed instead of a schoolhouse?
Well, the, the prior use really isn't established.
Is it assessed as a shed?
Uh, I don't know what it says.
That's what I was...
Accessory structure, really.
Yeah. So let's say if somebody wanted to use it as a one-room schoolhouse again, would that be permitted, just hypothetically, or?
Uh, I would go into the draft or the ordinance, it's what's been used the past three years.
Oh, three years.
That's, that's what it's stating, which...
Is that standard here?
No, it doesn't.
He, he said our ordinance.
No, he said the building code.
Oh, building code, we don't care about building code. That's not our deal, our deal is...
It's only the ordinance, that's gonna be that place to have it.
It's historic, it's moved back a few feet, isn't it? I mean, I don't understand why, because it's historic nature by being moved.
That's my point, is the building historic or is the site historic? Or are they both? What's, what, I mean, I'm sure you people have seen other towns where they've taken an historic building
The Town Hall.
And they've moved it to a park or to the center of town. Or, you know, this was back in the woods and we came across it, we're gonna bring it out so everybody can see and use it. Now, the site is, goes back to whatever, you know, weeds, but the building is what is being taken care of. They're not gonna be rebuilding this land, they're not doing anything to the land. It's the building that they're doing something to. Which is, again, why I never had an issue, well, originally, we're, we're supposed to make things as non-conforming. As a lesson, yeah, we have to make them more conforming. And that's why we have all these best possible locations. This property could be conforming on its own because they had all kinds of room to move back, so we had nothing to really do because there was room on the property to put the building, and that's where it has to go, as far as the ordinance is concerned. This amendment takes a look at historic buildings, which are found to be historic by apparently a town meeting or the acting shape of a historic society. Now, whether it comes to us or not, for our stamp of approval, it doesn't make any difference. But, is it the building or is it the site? Which is historic? It's still a little red schoolhouse. And, you know, whether it's here or whether it's there, but again, that's not the issue. Because we're not, we shouldn't be thinking about just that, we should be thinking about what this is asking, and this is asking, this is saying his historic structures, alright? Now, not every house that's non-conforming as far as setbacks is gonna be historic. And if it's, uh, upgraded more than fifty percent of its valuation, then code enforcement looks at it and says, well, let's see if we can make this more conforming. So they try and move it back, whether it's a barn that you're redoing, or it's a house or what have you. If it's destroyed by more than fifty percent, then we try and make it more conforming upon the lot. Now, we're not gonna end up making every home historic just so it doesn't have to move from where it presently is if it needs to be fixed up. Otherwise, you'd have every damn place in town historic. And that's pointless. As far as I'm concerned, but, you know, who am I? Anyway, this part of the comp plan, now, this kind of alludes to, uh, it may be worth time and money, time and money well spent restoring old sites and buildings and identifying historic or archaeological points of interest. So, what they did do, the old, uh, Mary Grant place, you know, they, they had to knock down the house, but they saved the barn and that, you know, is now the nice little park there, and they hold functions there and picnics, and there's that little walk path. Now, they knocked down the house and they just saved the barn, but it's not listed as historic yet in town. But it gets some use. I have no idea what this is gonna be, you know, after it's fixed up.
Well, I mean, according to what we heard in past meetings, it's gonna be just what it was before it was hit.
Which is empty.
An empty building.
So it's just, it's just for the looks of it, basically, is what's getting restored.
But, but if new orders come in, maybe they'll do another thing, how would they might think?
Well, that's right, we don't, but if, if this thing passes, it would have to be called historic then. And my guess is there would be some caveats placed on things we call historic, I would think. National registry, if you have a building that's historic, right away, there's all kinds of stuff you can't do. I mean, the, the courthouse in Alfred, not the old one, but the second one, it's on the national registry, but when they had to redo the windows, they had to pay tons of money to get custom-made windows that looked just like the ones that came out, but, you know, were, uh, energy efficient.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't have this at all.
Sometimes, uh, well, I don't know about paint colors anymore. Structurally, you can't mess with a lot of these things. Now, whatever we, we'd have to have a real definition of historic, I would think, because we don't, the one we have now is pretty open-ended. And, you know, if we don't say it has to stay the way it, it has to look the same, then people could change it to look like whatever they want it, and then, is it still historic? Just because we didn't wanna have them move it? So I, I don't, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know how this first part of the comp plan, does anyone see how this ordinance has helped, or does it make sense going with the comp plan on page, uh, V one, five one? Or does that not really pertain to it, you think? And then there's also the bottom of V two, we've got some more. Well, now that one. Well, here we go. Summary discussion, bottom of V two. Now that, to me, makes a little bit more sense pertaining to this ordinance. Where am I, uh, all the way?
Where are you looking?
I'm looking at summary discussion. It's a line, it seems to contain.
Oh, that one.
The, 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 and it goes to the top of page. Are we talking because of the reference to the location? Well, I think as far as, I think if you, if we were gonna hang our hat on something in the comp plan that's alluded to in this ordinance, this says we oughta come up with some kind of a, uh, uh, some kind of standards for protecting these resources. And if we allow them, if we allow historic buildings to stay where they were, doesn't that kinda fall in line with this? Or no? Is that better? Alright, also look at, uh, the last page. Nine, nine thirty-one, right in the middle there, goal. We can hang our hat on that. If you think this ordinance, you know, would, would fall within this parameter, then we could say that this ordinance goes along with or in line with the comp plan.
Well, the town's not doing the restoring.
Do we add a historical commissioner?
No. Well, not in town. There's the active chapter. Private society.
Isn't it just historical seventy-five feet back? I mean, I, I'm really confused about what, what it's about historical and.
Apparently, now this is just me, apparently this place is historical because of the building and because of where it's at. Otherwise, that wouldn't be an issue. They would've moved it back and we said fine. So I thought part of the issue was that we weren't necessarily talking about seventy-five feet from the corner where it is, in reality, further back because of the angle of the two roads. Well, I, I don't know. And then, I'm not sure about that measurement anyway, because I've heard one fifty banded around. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. I mean, we could, you know, somebody could figure out pretty easily, I would think. Seventy-five feet from here, seventy-five feet from here.
Seventy-five feet was six in my mind, wasn't it?
That would be the setback from the center of the right ways. Which, if you come from the two sides, once you find that building envelope, if you come from the Y, it's gonna be around a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet probably.
Oh, I see.
You just have to move it up the hill a little bit to get to seventy-five.
You don't really like turn it, though. You're seventy-five, you know, you just turn it and it's still gonna be just that seventy-five feet off whichever road you want it to be.
Exactly. And, and that's what's tough about making an ordinance for the town, but you're calling it the Little Red Schoolhouse ordinance. I mean, you're focusing on one. Uh, in the past, we've done ordinances for a specific individual to prohibit what he was doing. And then it hurt everybody else. Every time everybody else tried to do something, we couldn't because of that one individual. This is kinda the opposite, but.
But we don't know that down the road, this isn't, you know, I don't know. And I, I, I would think that if somebody else's place who has a home that's seventy-five or a hundred years old that gets damaged and they wanna, it has to be replaced more than fifty percent, they don't wanna move it, but they can move it, then they're gonna wanna say it's historic. And, you know.
They have to, if, if, then they would have to reconstruct it as it was.
Well, yeah, if it was a home and they were gonna keep it as a home, yeah.
No adding someone's or.
Yeah, this was designated as a story. Shaskeen story, was that always in there?
Yes, pretty much, yeah.
It has to get popular though.
That one?
Which?
The Lord, our God, would be.
Because, because when you're focusing on the one building, this is the third time it's been hit that I'm aware of.
Oh, okay.
Really? Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. Mine and Dan, this is the most significant time.
Yeah, 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 right.
I mean, the rest was.
And, you know, that doesn't mean that it can't happen against them.
Exactly.
Now, but originally, we weren't really keen on the safety issue because the property had room.
To relocate.
To relocate it. And we didn't have to do anything. The ordinance took care of it.
And she's got a conforming lot, that's why it's going, that's why it's at the seventy-five feet. Uh, at the public hearing, there was a list of several other historical structures or relevant structures. A lot, a lot of those are on non-conforming lots and be a fifty-foot setback. So the ordinance has been changed or, or adjusted, so the setbacks are reduced for the non-conforming lots to, to keep them out of the zoning board, looking for variances.
And then it would be a, if there was room, it would have to come to you anyway, it might have to come to us for a best possible location.
If it was less than the fifty feet.
Yes.
Non-conforming lot.
Yeah.
But in her case, she's got eighty-four acres or so, and so much row front, it's a conforming lot.
But there again, all we're really looking at, all we should really be looking at is, does this ordinance, was that a telephone? Oh, yeah.
I think it was the.
Wait a minute, are you paying attention to this?
Yes, I am, yes.
Does this fall in line with our comp plan? That's all we have to do. Because we're not making our recommendation on the ordinance per se.
I think.
I mean, I, I, to be honest, which you know me, I don't like to be honest.
Well, what's happening?
I think, uh, the one on page thirty-one, I could see this falling in line with that. But I'm only one person.
I think it was both of the town attorneys agreed that it was in conflict.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, he, yeah, the one through five.
You've got their stuff, right?
This thing right here, somebody wanna look at number one with me and how we understand where they, how they think it's in conflict with the.
If you wanna take a look at the existing, that one?
Yes.
Well, I don't know.
They just kinda throw the comprehensive plan in at the end there. Because they say in the last line, however, this entire scheme would create a situation in which structures were identified as being historically significant without complying with the town's comprehensive plan. And is that just because they were voted in by the, the town meeting as opposed to by the registry of
I think that.
Historical buildings?
Yeah, I, I think they consider, and usually, if something's historic, it's a bigger organization that says it's historic versus, you know, you, me, and Tom at the town meeting.
Right.
So there's only. The ordinance references the main society for the, in our definition of historic.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Resources.
Well, yeah. It, it's fun though, it's, it's possible that the, in this particular situation, if they applied to the historic registry, they might get accepted there as well and.
And then we could look at it, that would've been something we could've looked at during the process for best possible location, that it was. And again, back to chips, is it the building or the location?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and you hate to think, whatever the owner of this was somebody nobody liked in town, would, it could go through town meeting versus something, you know, a person everybody likes in town, the nice person or the other individual from out of state that, you know, nobody liked, you know, is, is that, is, are they gonna look at the structure or the person? That's what.
Well, that's, it's probably both of them, isn't it? That's gonna happen at town meeting too. That could even happen at the historical society too.
Yeah.
Well, that can always happen up the ladder, I guess.
I'm not sure how allowing a building to stay in most thought really has anything to do with chronicling assets by the town or, or making it available for visitation of, of interested visitors or. I mean, I, I mean, maybe I'm just tired and not being open-minded enough, but I'm, I'm not making the connection, quite frankly, between anything the comp plan says and what they're proposing.
Seems like when the, when the comprehensive plan was written, when they, they put these couple of references to historical structures in there, they were envisioning something that was designated by a higher authority than the town meeting and that's.
I think that would go a little.
And I think they wanted, some group in town, excuse me, some group in town to come up with more information on what would be historic and, and, you know, something like that, and it just hasn't happened yet. Because they did, somewhere they alluded to, you know, setting up, you know, conservation committee would be this committee or some other committee would do it.
Right, right.
And the pages that say who's gonna do these various things, that was one of those deals, but it hasn't happened yet. Anyway.
I, I don't object to a community deciding amongst themselves what structures or locations have historic value to them.
No, but that's not, that's not what this is. The comp plan isn't suggesting that.
Right.
The, the proposed ordinance is.
Yes, but what, the only thing we're looking at tonight is, does the proposed ordinance fall within the criteria of a comprehensive plan?
And does it have to?
Yes.
Yes.
Wait to determine.
If they don't, they're illegal. The comp plan is what everything has to be based on.
Well, I'm just.
We don't always.
Paragraphs where we sit, I mean, the one, I haven't read the whole thing, but paragraphs that.
These are the ones.
Long to read.
These are the only ones that deal with historical, uh, stuff in the whole book, which is right like this.
Right, I remember working on it.
Yeah. So it's just these few pages that deal with anything historical. And if we don't think that the few things that we have, that this falls within their purview, then we would say, no, it doesn't meet the comp plan as it is now. And we could address it in the future and, you know, change the ordinance so that it does fall within the comp plan.
Well, okay, the goals, I mean, with the strategies, um, suggest creating a historical commission, inventorying historical buildings.
Thank you.
But this.
Nine thirty-one.
Yes, that's one.
Goal, it's just a continuation.
That's one of the things.
Preventing subdivision regulations to insert post-site ordinance language, which ensures the historical archaeological resources will be identified.
See, that's one of the things that could be done. It just hasn't happened yet, that's all. Now, if we're not, if you're not comfortable deciding, thinking, or deciding whether this falls within the comp plan, we can say, fine, we should send this question to MMA and see what we get from them. Because unless you agree with what the town lawyer has.
I think, I think it follows with the.
Do you?
So, so if it was to go to MMA and they came back with a different decision, who, who, what, what happens at that point? You have two different legal opinions.
Well, then, we could come to, we could pick one or the other. We could pick neither and leave it up to the selectmen, because the selectmen can decide not to put this on the ballot because it doesn't meet the comp plan as far as they're concerned. And it is the town's lawyer that gave them the, the opinion, and it doesn't meet the goals of the comp plan. So my guess would be they may go that way and say, no, this doesn't meet the, the goals and come up with something different. Or have a special town meeting and do it on your own, because they do have another option. There's like a Plan Z to all this stuff.
So where do they?
And maybe the MMA will say the same thing, that there, it doesn't meet the comp plan the way it's written out.
Well, doesn't the comp plan kinda presume that some kind of historical commission would've been created? And, and then, of course, if we haven't gotten around to it yet, do we need to create something like that before?
If we're gonna deal with historical stuff, we probably should, or some group in town should, like the conservation committee could maybe turn into that or whatever they wanna do, or start a brand new one.
They often take care of historical.
Right.
Historical structures, that's a whole day.
Structures, yeah.
Cemetery structure.
Cemetery.
Obviously, those are on the side of the roads a lot of times too.
So.
For sure.
But they haven't presented a town with any kind of standards yet.
So.
So we've got nothing.
Those definitions of historic, historic structures, it, it really needs to be historic due to something that happened there. You know, architecture of this period or, it, it needs to be a set of criteria for historic other than just when.
Whose definition are you talking about?
I'm talking about this.
The, the town.
Those change.
His definition, historic structures. Sources designated.
You know, should be tied to events or.
Yeah, we, we have one in the ordinance. It, it, it says resources instead of structures, but.
Identified and.
The things that they talked about are the silver mine in the comp plan, the silver mine.
The Lincoln School. Yeah, so those, those are because of history.
The Great East Lake Canal is the only thing I know that's on the registry.
National. Is that? New Hampshire did that or Maine did that? Yeah, that's what I thought, because New Hampshire pretty much controls it, right? Even though it's on the.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we, the definition we have is areas identified by a governmental agency, which could be anything. How, well.
Could be the planning board, right?
Could be the planning board, could be town meeting.
Yeah, but the governmental agency is going to have criteria.
Such as Maine Historic Preservation Commission. But such as doesn't mean it has to be only that. As having significant value as a historic or archaeological resource in, in any areas identified in the municipality's comp plan. So anything that's identified in the comp plan as historic is under the definition D-A. And anything that is identified by a governmental agency, which could be town meeting. So that's our definition in the book. Anyone else wanna weigh in, whether you think this is, falls within the purviews of the comp plan or outside of it? We heard from Art. Or do you wanna chicken out and get another lawyer's opinion? A free lawyer, albeit.
I'd wait a while to get.
Life of the bigs.
They're essentially at the end of the month.
Yes.
That's what we were told.
Yes.
They have to make, put the decision in one, they have to sign the order.
And, to be honest. They have an opinion from the town lawyer that it does not meet. If we say it does, they don't have to go with what we say. Who are we? We're just, you know.
They never do.
We're also like us.
Are we supposed to vote on this? I mean, or are they just?
We can vote, we can come to a consensus, but not on the ordinance, just on whether we think it meets the comp plan criteria. Art thinks it does, as written.
The more problematic to me is the definition of historical structures.
Oh, their definition?
Yeah. Well, even the, even the one I made.
Yeah.
Essentially, there's no criteria.
There's no standard determining whether.
What makes it historical?
Well, I said that if a government, well, yeah, there could be a governmental agency, it could be the town meeting, and town meeting could, which is.
But there is the valid point that anything could be historical. I mean, they say, oh, the 250-year-old oak tree that's on the corner, you know, has been there longer than even the town, and everyone uses it as a landmark. I mean, it's, you know, I mean, it's, it's a valid argument that that in itself could be historical, it didn't have to be a man-made entity.
Right, it comes historic if Paul Revere titles it.
Well, there's the building on the corner of Milton Mills Road. Far now, but it was, it's very historically significant, it has a storied facility.
Oh, need the whole town.
Yeah, exactly, that, that's a historic building.
Built in six.
I'd also gotta encourage you to take a stand.
For a lot of people, that's history.
What?
So what does it stand?
I'm looking, I'm looking for opinions, I've only heard one person.
I think I have a hard time going against a legal opinion that I think is unbiased, as opposed to listening to an opinion from somebody who is, without a doubt, biased. And to me, it does make sense to go and get an opinion that we would consider unbiased. And so therefore now we have one maybe from our court, one from the selectmen's court, one from, you know, Dale Barrow's court. But at least then, if we have to make a decision, we have something to support our decision. Right now, the only thing that's supporting our decision that I hear is us throwing, bantering things around with no, no support.
Right. So you're all for getting another opinion from MMA?
I am.
All right. What say you?
I guess so, because, I guess so.
That makes sense to you?
It makes, always makes sense to get more advice, because I, I'm not seeing how it fits, unless it's gonna be inventoried and be turned into a display and made into, you know, that's what, that's what this is talking about.
Oh, yeah.
This is talking about, the, the comp plan is about creating, preserving things for the benefit.
Life to Mary grant deal, something like that.
At least that would be my interpretation.
Mine too.
And it would involve creating an organization that would be documenting these things and putting up exhibits and writing little pieces and doing all kinds of stuff I used to do in New York City.
Could there be some part of the conditions that get put on? When they come for conditional use permit, can you add conditions?
Oh, place, oh, certainly, reasonable conditions.
Yeah, like that, that some.
The town gets some benefit out of this.
Some benefit, some use.
Other than just looking at it next to the road.
But that's not what she wants to do.
Well, I know, it would be the purview of a conditional use permit to do the reconstruction.
But if you're writing an ordinance, then that would have, that should be in one of the conditions right there in that ordinance.
Exactly.
But they're exempt, so it can be put.
They know the town meeting, and they wouldn't come to the plan appointment. That's how it's written.
They have ordinance, it's an example.
Wait, wait, wait. But he mentions conditional use somewhere, doesn't he?
No.
Wait a minute.
And there was the two happenstance, you guys, the yellow with the town meeting.
Yeah, and just the fact that there's, yeah, how do you decide it was historic recently?
Right, it could be somebody's lake, like their little camp on the lake that's historic.
Then who ran there?
I guess they get it up, and if they get enough people, we've had people in the bank who wanted to save a chimney because it was built by a grandfather or a great-grandfather who's.
Oh, I remember that.
Brings it came from, who knows where, and so, and all they need is a handful of people at town meeting?
Yeah, I remember that, fifteen years ago, I remember.
MMA, MMA. What do you think? Don't look at him.
Well, you said we're supposed to put in too much.
Oh, this I don't care about.
Yeah, I don't really understand that.
Because there might be monetary, what's that word?
Bites?
No, uh, security area interest. Security area interest.
But in terms of this, I don't really have that.
Yeah, there's a lawyer's opinion, actually, paragraph two is pretty poignant about not having standards.
Oh, not the town not having standards? Or this?
For determining what's a historical structure.
Right, 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 you're right.
I mean, that's lose-lose, it sounds like lose-lose for the homeowner and for the town in, in paragraph two, right? So.
So?
I say no.
Changing your mind? No, what?
I'm saying that I do not feel like that.
Falls within the comp plan?
Agreed with the town attorneys.
Yeah.
All right, so.
But we could still get a third opinion, but two attorneys have already agreed?
Well, they're in the state office.
Well. No, they're different.
They are different?
Yeah.
California's laying juice one for litigation, yeah.
Um, all right.
And I hate to beat that down, but.
And usually with a historical situation, there's a list, these are all of them in the evidence, you know.
So, Tom Gavin, what do you think? Could MMA, the way?
I can't speak on this issue.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Well, okay, fine. So MMA, so I'll work up something, I'll give it to Jennifer, and we'll fire it off to MMA, and we'll see what happens.
She has to be tomorrow morning.
Yeah, next week, yeah, or next month. Oh, that's right. Well, I'm, uh. Oh, she's gone. All right, so we'll, we'll ask MMA what they think. And.
That's what I was saying, but then I.
Anything else?
Yeah.
What, Tom? Oh, yeah, Tom.
You, you all got four pages from Brendan's good help.
Where, which ones?
Discussing item number one, an abstract from Maine's revised statutes.
Oh, was it under the pile of stuff? In this thing? Oh, I got it, it's right here.
If anybody need one, I got extra one. We touched on this briefly at our last meeting, I think, or when you were at the meeting that we spoke about it, I'm pretty sure that you, I don't know.
Right before the hearing, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, Sixteenth?
What, what I'm. Catching up on here is the Board of Selectmen's language in their proposal, where they did a similar omission as we chose to do in the second standard of the conditional use permit guidelines, where we omitted the word undeveloped so that our work would be applicable for both developed and undeveloped lots. Does anybody recall that discussion there? There was a little bit of board discussion on that, and I think I made the point for clarity's sake that we ought to include both terms, but notion did carry debate, but anyway, the intent of the board, Penny, who wrote it on our language, was that the conditional use permit on the planning board proposal was eligible for both developed and undeveloped lots. The problem arose when the Board of Selectmen carrying our same language forward in theirs, which is applicable to, in lots in the shoreline zone, and in the Maine State Guidelines on page, item two, you'll see in the original language of the guidelines that the lot of existing structures proposed is undeveloped, is under E-two. So what they have done in moving forward of that language is they've created a situation that is more permissive than the state statutes, and I don't see how that can be legal.
So what happens if that wins? Then they send it to the state?
Yes, and the state says whether it's.
And the state rewrites it again, probably.
Well, no, they'll send it back to us. They'll say it's fine, or they'll say, you can't do this, you have to change it, then they'll have to change it.
Well, what is, I mean, what do, what do people make out of my contention here? Is there, is there a misstatement on their part?
Well, now, when you're talking developed, you're talking the state definition about the, a house every 500 feet?
No, it's on item two, on that same four-page thing that you were just looking at. I just, no, in here.
Right.
The initial write-off that we got from Penny, that we started, what we kind of started from.
The planning board used this language, the special exceptions language, in the, this is taken from guidelines of municipal shoreline zone ordinances, that the committee that developed these shoreline zones, stands with it, now utilize this meaningful language for, as a basis for their work. And as it clearly states, in the shoreline zone, the lot on which the structure is proposed is undeveloped, is one of the criteria for applicability of this conditional use permit process. The problem being that they omitted.
Well, some agree, right?
Yes, we were given.
If we were only dealing with smaller.
Outside the shoreline zone.
So I, I.
Well, that's their problem.
Well.
What did they say when you told them?
They said, we'll, we'll send it up to a lawyer and run it up the flag with the finance and water committee and the company. But on the face of it now, as it stands, just so, I want to get some corroboration from the way I'm thinking on this, as it stands now, the selectmen are putting in front of the town, what I would glean from what I've dug up here, is an illegal bit of work.
That question actually crossed my mind the other Friday morning.
And I, I, I think we ought to at least clearly, if we're in agreement on what we're perceiving here, we ought to at least clearly articulate that to the Board of Selectmen.
You've already told me.
I saw Ted on Monday night of this week, he met briefly with the finance and water committee, and I was walking the finance and water committee through this, and he said, fine, you know, clarify it with, with the planning board and see what Penny thinks, and we'll move it forward with a legal inquiry, so that's what it stands again. But I think it, on behalf of the voters, it definitely needs clarification before this thing goes into other.
That very question crossed my mind like Friday, after the meeting on Friday, I was thinking, well, if the selectmen say passes, then it goes to the state, what if the state doesn't approve of, you know, the notion that we would let someone build a 3,000-foot structure if 1,800 of the feet of it were in the wetland? That's the state's gonna be deciding that, right?
I, I was, I was curious why that wording was in there, and, and I would intuit it has something maybe to do with the notion that I've been, you know, the gong I've been trying to ring on this thing, that the, the carrying capacity of the shoreline zone, you know, in a lot of towns like Acton, is, is at, at, at its outermost, you know, limit. We have, we have a huge density in the shoreline zone, is what I'm trying to say. And they put that out there as a, as a means to kind of take down some opposition that they might have had to the notion of any expansion, they said, well, we'll allow it in undeveloped lots or something, but, which would be a safer way to go, it should be having less of an impact if you, if you did it on undeveloped lots. But to allow it on already developed lots as well is another matter.
So, so the reaction upstairs when you brought that up was?
It was just, it was just to Ted, and he, he was in a very conciliatory mood that night toward the finance and water committee, there'd been, there'd been a little bumping of heads there, but I was, I was pleased with the fact that he was willing to, you know, consider a, a legal inquiry anyway, so.
Well, we took it up.
And I apologize for not bringing this up before. I saw it a couple of weeks ago, I was kind of trying to bring it up before the public hearing, and I tried to explain it unsuccessfully, and so here I am.
And when he said, he meaning Ted, said to Chuck McKenny, Kenny's reaction to that?
I call it A, B, and C if that matters to them. If it's in conflict, they would just send us a notice that we'd put into the ordinance and requesting it to be changed sooner rather than later.
Right. And we couldn't act on it until it was changed. I mean.
Well, we come through the planning board review anyways, it's not like.
Yes, but nobody could do anything on their property until it was fixed, is what I'm saying. If it passed a town meeting and they said, this isn't right, fix it. Nothing happens till we fix it. Now, but they are, the, the state ordinance is dealing with building in Resource Protection District, right?
In shoreline zone. Subset, IP is a subset of shoreline zone, in the shoreline zone, if you know what I'm saying. There, it's like the big swamps next to Squirt Lineup by, by.
All right, all right. Or the lodge, right, the public lodge?
Yeah, downstream, upstream.
But I, I would, I would be a little nervous about that process, Kenny, where, where if you say A and it can automatically mean Z by somebody's determination, I think that the wording on this has to be changed before it goes to the voters.
Oh, I don't think it's gonna be changed before this is the voters.
Well, I.
These ballots are leave, we've probably been entitled to go over that absentee.
Oh, wait a second, this way, this is, yeah, this is referendum. Oh, well, yeah, then nothing can happen with this.
So we'll just. So we'll just hit it by just on how to fix it.
Yeah, so you've got to tell, you've got to tell town meeting to get an answer on whether it's right or not, and maybe, and I don't know if we can break, now you can't put it up on the.
No, you wouldn't. It'd be a special town meeting to fix it, and if they didn't have a reason for a special town meeting, I wouldn't bring this, I wouldn't create a special town meeting just for this.
No, but if the Lord House of the Prairie doesn't pass.
Yeah.
They're going to have their own special town meeting, and throw this on.
Exactly. If there's a reason to have one, then make it, and then I'll bring it up next year.
One other thing that has, has bothered me about this, Brenda was good enough initially to make a copy. I don't know if everybody's got this. I think it was six pages long, and it just looked like this on the first page. She put our work in context with the ordinance. When I tried to do that with the board of Selectmen's work, I can't make the, the section headings work. It looks to me like they're, they're, again, it might be through an omission and not intentional, but it looks to me like they've done away with, because of their numbering. They've done away with the citation 4226. And we have no way of knowing this because they haven't produced a copy. I think they have done away with, they're utilizing for their new definition 4226, and as far as I've seen, there's no remuneration of the existing 4226, which we have included in our, yeah, which is the dimensional requirements.
And that's right underneath.
Right, I thought they were only changing 4223, uh, 4. I thought they were only changing 4224.
And the 6 is straightened out.
Right.
It changes 6 to 7.
What happens on that same question too, right at the bottom of it? 6 is strike out, 7's underlined.
I remember my thoughts.
It's an easy fix anyways.
But 4226 entitled dimensional requirements in our ordinance, what happens to that?
Become a 7.
Well, we have no way of knowing that.
Well, tell us.
Well, says.
Tell us.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah.
I thought you said it, but I think it was in the meeting.
Okay, I'm happy. I got it.
I'll call the DEP and have any answer for our next meeting on undeveloped.
Will you? What a guy. We're going to find out.
I have another quick question.
Go ahead.
While we're on the topic.
Excuse me, can I just interject one thing? The voters have to know about that, about what the meaning of the Selectmen's article is, either post, before, or after the call to the DEP goes out. The voters, it's, it's primary that the voters know what the hell they're voting on. And I don't know how they're going to.
There's nothing you can do.
There's nothing. They're voting on it.
Well, you can.
Nothing you can do around here, anyway.
You can write an article in the newspaper or something.
Hey, speaking of which.
The, the celebrity box.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, the check's in the bag. Anyway, there's nothing we can do. We can't post anything within X feet of the town hall.
We can put a big sign in my yard, Tom.
It's, it's incumbent upon the board of Selectmen, that's all. To put out something there that is, is unintelligible and illegal currently, I hope they feel it's incumbent upon themselves to at least explain to the voters what they're voting on.
Well, we'll see what DEP says. If DEP says you can't do this, then, you know, you'll let them know, and they'll do what they're going to do. It's their, it's their deal. But we have ours right here, and ours is strictly legal.
Well, the board want to get, I mean, that's not really a, that's a land use, whatever, bureaucracy opinion.
Well, the other ones, the other ones.
The authority authority.
Yeah, the DEP's the one that's going to be.
I can call, I'm a land use attorney if you want.
I would like to.
I'm not paying for that.
It would be interesting to hear what he says.
Yeah, and I would probably kick that by him too.
Yeah.
You know, I've got other things to deal with, so. But the DEP's the one that wrote that. Mike Morris is the one that, has, wrote the guidelines and stuff, so. He would be the more knowledgeable one, because when we send the ordinance out, he, it's him and the commissioner that approve it.
Yeah.
Or send this along back.
Right. Which they didn't pass.
And it hasn't happened?
Yeah, a long time ago.
They, that's maybe a fine point, but the point of whether or not the DEP would approve it is, is separate from the point of understanding of the voters on what the hell they're voting on.
We had.
If you have no control.
We've had, yeah, it's, that's the deal with the referendum votes. That's why in the past, we've always liked to have zoning issues, at least when I've been on the board, at a town meeting when you could explain it as best as you can.
Whereabouts in the front yard, Billy?
That's, yeah, that's all you can do.
And what is the other?
Anything else?
Just one thing. I was just gonna, it's something that's been puzzling me, and I'm sure in the law, it makes no big difference, but if you read the definition of, you know how they, they're proposing to change the definition, one of the sections of definitions of the resource protection, right?
The Selectmen?
The Selectmen, yes.
All right.
They're, they're saying that it's only within the shoreline district.
Right.
So the definition of shoreline district is defined by the wetland. So you're now defining a district that's being defined by a wetland that has to be in the district. I'm, if you read it, you know, it's the upper land edge of a wetland or within 75 feet of horizontal distance of normal high water, what the screen had.
Or 250 mile.
Yeah, that is not within the resource protection district. So, I don't know, I mean, it just to me creates one of those circular things that in Excel that would say, you're going to.
Do you have the shades? Oh, that's our definition, boy. Wait, whose definition is that?
Well, the definition in the book of shoreline uses the word wetland, uses the upper edge of a wetland as part of its definition.
Right, right, right.
But then, if they want to change, they want to change the resource protection definition to include wetlands of 2 or more than 2 US acres in the shoreline district. It's not as important as the point Tom's making. It's just, it's something that's been puzzling me. I doubt it would make much difference because we all kind of know what we're talking about, but.
Yes, but there's going to be the one guy and his lawyer who are going to say, hey, wait a minute. And then they'll end up doing whatever they want because we don't have the right definition. So it's, it's, it's valid if they're.
I mean, they're changing the definition of resource protection district by saying the wetlands have to be in shoreline, but the shoreline is talking about wetlands is defined itself by wetlands.
Well, we do that a lot, though. And you shouldn't, but we.
That's exactly what my bridge is saying.
Well, I know, and that, that doesn't, I'm not, that's not, I'm not saying it's right, but.
Does the board?
Your point started by giving a.
Does the board, does the board want to make a recommendation by a show of hands tonight on this three zoning proposals? Because we're not going to, apparently, we're not going to get a chance to do it in writing.
Well, we've got, I mean, we presented one to the town, and we, I think we said, we had our say in it.
No, you, there are, there are many ways to go on this. There are three options. First, to our board of Selectmen proposed to counter our initial proposals out of the street. And the way it stands now, from my standpoint, I see the board of Selectmen's proposal as an unreasonable solution to an imaginary problem. Their whole thrust of the abatement issue didn't hold water, so I don't know why they're going forward with this. And, and we reacted to the premise that that was viable, and we had good faith in, in that notion, and it turned out not to be correct. So I personally am going to vote no on all three items. I don't know what.
Well, that's fine.
I don't know what the board feel their obligation is to, to the voters to express an opinion on this.
We presented an article to the, to the town, and I think it was almost anonymous.
It wasn't unanimous.
There you go.
So we, we made no expression of feeling toward the board of Selectmen's. I mean, you, you, we recommended our, we recommended our own work unanimously, so you're saying we accept that we.
That's our message. If we wanted what the Selectmen have, we would have done what the Selectmen did. We talked, we talked all around this.
Okay.
You know, we could have done that.
Well, yeah, our work did precede the workshop, though. It's important to remember that we weren't fully informed about the validity of the premise of the abatements being real or not, so. Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Thanks for coming, everybody. Good night, Cablehead.